This committee of the whole is now called order. It was requested last evening that we resolve into the committee of the whole so that we could hear from the members of the retirement fund. I have with me the chairman of the retirement fund, Speaker Jody Sinagustin, Mr. Jerry Cruz, also a member of the retirement fund appointed by the governor, and Mr. Vince Camacho, who's legal counsel for the retirement fund. So what I'd like, I thought maybe what we would do is, I know some of you have questions, but I think maybe if we have some of the members explain the bill, some people didn't attend the hearing, it might make things a little clearer and maybe might address some of the questions that you all have in your minds. Would that be okay? We'll start with the chairman, and then Mr. Cruz, and then Mr. Camacho.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. Members of this body, thank you very much for giving me the privilege to be with you folks. Yesterday's discussion, and the discussion was, quite frankly, was quite a surprise and at times kind of shocking, and rather quite revealing. Somehow, the effective parties in the Hy-Vit plan had been of less concern to, based on the discussion that we had yesterday, on this body, which is an organization which I have served for, and honored to serve for over, for more than 10 years. Needless to say, the merits and the needs to provide a rather defined economic security for over 7,800 government employees since 1995, there are members of the D.C. retirement plan, were, summarily, were really not an issue. If you guide the discussion yesterday, somewhere or another, these 7,000 must seem to be out of focus, and I'm kind of rather surprised about that, and I guess that's how, why this body is so, is a deliberate body. As originally conceived, the D.C. plan was to provide members with a self-direct investment plan, with no plan sponsors, unfunded liability, and hopefully, a portable plan from government to the private sector. But most important, the movement toward establishing the D.C. plan in 1995 was primarily predicated on the cost, on the base of cost savings. And it was anticipated that between fiscal year in 1996 to fiscal year 2008 will be the end in the neighborhood of over $584,627,984, or an average of $45 million per fiscal year. Under the D.C. plan, government normal cost share was reduced from a nine and a half to 5 percent, and were matched by an equal 5 percent from the D.C. member. There is no unfunded liability under the D.C. plan. D.C. members were given its choice in their projected annuities. Compared to the DB, nine and a half percent by the employee, government at 6.3 percent, and the unfunded liability at 12.9999 percent. That was in 1995. That was the premises, that we were sold, that we're going to be saving, you know, over $585 million. The question is, did we realize the anticipated cost savings? Perhaps not. But any savings were quickly absorbed by an unanticipated social cost reflected in our government welfare role, where after 19 years, some 8,900 current D.C. employees have, having had to depend on their own self-directed investment choices, which are actually consultant testified to be totally inadequate. Hopefully, the Hy-Vit plan would allow these D.C. employees and their survivors some economic security. I'm rather concerned that throughout yesterday's session, discussion, no member authored a single word about the main objective of the plan, that is, considering the future economic security annuities of these 7,800 employees and their survivors. What is more disturbing is that some members are apparently convinced by certain individuals in our community, accepting their messages as the gospel truth. Let me cite one. The first individual claimed to have over 25 years of retirement investment experience, 20 years of which have been with the Micronesia, primarily with the CNMI Retirement Fund. And he proudly said that he actually managed the D.C. component of the CNMI. You know as well as we do what's the situation of the CNMI Retirement Fund. The same gentleman noted that the same firm have, have actually bid twice to take over the third party of the current government D.C. plan. They were not even, not successful, twice, and were all bid by U.S. nationwide investment firms as the third-party administrator. Thank God we didn't, otherwise, we would have been in the same situation as the CNMI. This is the gospel that's bringing to you. The other individual claimed to be the watchdog of the retirement fund by costing the fund some over $200,000 of trust money paid to him in legal fees. And right now, he asking for $100,000 just to be paid, just to be, so putting us up to court every time. And that's what his vested interest is. He's not concerned about what's going to happen to the retirement fund. Let's, let's consider the source. Sure, these two people have vested interests. If this Hy-Vit plan goes through, he will have not a, what do you call it, a chance of getting taken over the third-party administrator. And to match his record with a nationwide corporation that have access to the worldwide market, that's a disservice to the members of the fund to give somebody who will have to actually contract out the services to somebody else, at considerable cost. And every time you pay these firms, that means less money to the members. But before I conclude, let me clarify this part of the unfunded liability. This is the most, people that are so misguided over the unfunded liability. The unfunded liability is never paid by either DB or D.C. members of the fund, contrary to what misguided statements were presented to this body or to these individuals, that considered them to be experts in retirement. This is the greatest lie on hawks, asking, telling people that the DB members and the D.C. are paying for the unfunded liability. It is the plan sponsor that's paying it, that's the government's share of paying. There's no way that the employee, as any employee, DB employee whatsoever, look at their paycheck, paycheck stop. Do they see 29 percent deducted from their paycheck? Do they, all they see is 9.5 percent or 5 percent. And to claim that they are paying for the unfunded liability of these retirees is a complete hawk, and nothing more to distract. And these two gentlemen that claim to themselves to be experts, and actually trying to bleed the fund, all they want is to be able to get in, into the, to take over the contract of the D.C. plan, or to want some more legal fees. To date, the fund has spent over $150,000 just to get these guys get off their back. And now, he's convincing some members that, hey, this Hy-Vit plan is no good. This is no good. And he's saying that the unfunded liability has been paid by the DB members or D.C., that is a complete hawk, ladies and gentlemen. You know that's what I do. No member paid for the D.C. or DB, for the unfunded. That is the plan sponsor responsibility, the government. If you don't want to pay the unfunded liability, that is the body, the purpose of this body and the government. We on the retirement fund are only a trustee of the fund. If you don't want to pay the unfunded liability, then that's your prerogative, no more than if you don't want to pay for your mortgage payment, that's your prerogative. You have these people, 9,000 employees working for the government, and you have, you have to give them some kind of future. We gave the DB members some kind of economic security. That is what we call the best plan, because it was necessary in 1950. In 1950, we had to beg people to work for the government. We had to pay so much money, an inducement, to work and retain and attract qualified government employees. But by 1995, we no longer have to beg. We have the highest price, we can attract the best qualified government employees to work for the government. But you cannot retain them now, but as long as you keep them in hostage. And that's what the D.C. members did, and that's why we need this Hy-Vit, to give them some kind of future security. To do that, it'd be a disservice to them, and to keep on retaining and deserving, keep on extending and extending. You might as well have the guts and say, no, and just do it again. This bill has been in the process for the last 10 years. We have three, four options, as you know, when we consider this thing. We had option, when we considered the D.C., to terminate the D.C. and to supplement by Social Security. This is what a lot of people say, though. Well, since 1989, ladies and gentlemen, we've been trying to get Social Security extended to Guam, and Social Security said, no. Congressman Juan Pad did amend the Social Security to allow casual employees to get in. But when we did get in there, they came back with a hefty price, they said we have to pay three years back pay, over $2.5 million, back in 1973. So what we did, the legislature, is to change the law and allow them to get into the retirement fund. These are the cashing employees and intermittent employees at the commercial port. But that window was open for them, but did not, they did not amend the Social Security to allow government Guam to get in. Up to now, section 218 of the Social Security Act exclude Guam. And hopefully, and I, Senator Seneca's resolution for Social Security, I purposely stayed away from the public hearing, because I don't want to, I said, good luck. If you can get Social Security extended to Guam, good luck. But Social Security administrators adamly, for 1989, says, no to Guam, for only 10,000 people, when they have to consider, right across the bay of New York, some over $2.5 million people that they have to take care also if they extend it to Guam. Supplemental Social Security income was only extended to CNMI. We all know what that is. That was a State Department's decision to allow CNMI to join the United States. That was an inducement, Congressman Juan Pad sponsored that. But only CNMI, up to now, we like, we like supplemental Social Security income to Guam. We like, but if they open that to Guam, they have to open that to Puerto Rico, over $2.5 million people there. Social Security people cannot open that door just to allow Guam, that's what they do, that's why we, we cannot have a vacuum. Since 1950, 1968, we didn't have Social Security in 1952, they only extended to Guam in 1968. We had the option to terminate the DB plan at that time and go Social Security. But the DB plan was only in place, and to terminate that, and to go to Social Security, it was unheard of. The employees voted down that in 1950, 1968. Take the history of that. Now, when they extended it to the private sector, fine, it's good. But now, before, you got to have either Social Security or not at all, I mean, or retirement plan, they cannot be supplemented. But now, they open it, yes, let's have Social Security on top of the retirement plan that we have. The point is, can you afford it? Can you afford Social Security on top of the DB plan or a D.C. plan, for whatever plan you have? Or would you, you're going to dump what we have, DB, that we have, the people of Guam and the government employees had for the last 40 years, dump them in favor of Social Security? That is a decision you have to make, but you got to live with that. You tell each employee in the face that we're going to put you on Social Security, but don't hope that you ever get the same benefits that you have, what you have now. Now, ladies and gentlemen, the policy is in your hands and the governor. We at the retirement fund are only trustee of the fund itself. We're concerned with the benefits of the, of the members, that they're only best mandated by law. If you folks don't want to give it to them, we have no authority to do so. And this statement that we allow the governor and the legislature to raid the fund is a complete hawk. Since when does the retirement fund have the authority to allow or to do, to give anything to the legislature? The legislature passed a law, and the governor signed the law, it's the law of the land. We are in the trustee, you will comply. If you say you want to abolish the plan today, pass the law, so be it. Close the door, so be it. But don't pass it on to the retirement fund. We have no responsibility for the policy determination of these funds. You are the board of retirement fund trustees. You and the governor are the ultimate board of retirement fund trustees. We're just delegated from you. We're operating on a delegated authority from this legislature. So we ask your assistance. Look at these four, these people. Do you want to terminate the D.C. and merge the DB plan? Do you want the D.C. to be supplemented by Social Security? Do you want the D.C. to be supplemented by secure foundation, which what is offered by the great west, the great west plan, with the third-party administrator? Or do you want now to have this Hy-Vit? We went through a lot of discussion, back for the last five, six years, and we end up with perhaps the proposed Hy-Vit. It's not the best one, but among the four, to me, to us, that is the best offer that we recommend to you. You guys can just dump it wherever you want, and continue the same D.C. plan as it is. This is not, no sweat on our part. You make the determination, you make the decision, you, the future of these government employees in your hands, not in our hands. It's never been in our hands. We're only a trustee of what's mandated by law. If you don't want to give them any benefit, so be it. A lot of retirement benefits are cutting down the benefit. The same thing with CNMI. The trustees of the CNMI board were not responsible for that. It's the government itself, when they fail to pay their obligation for 20 years. Can you imagine the government of Guam failing to pay the government share for the last, for 25 years, and expect the fund to be viable? That's exactly what CNMI did. And poor CNMI people have to suffer, have to suffer. And you know what? One of the managers of those plans are the ones that are echoing to this body, that forget about this Hy-Vit, forget about this. There are these people, the expert on the retirement fund, master history, with the combination of the history of our retirement fund. And a lot of you members have a much more gifted on investment field. Consider the source and weigh it. Think of the 7,800 employees and their families. Think about it. Do you want to take care of them? So be it. You want to keep them on a dangling for the next two, three years? So be it. But the burden, the responsibility is on your back and the government. It's not, never in our back. We've done our share, we have worked with the vice speaker and the lady in Pagnina, we brought to the podium for the public, that's what it is. No matter what we did, if you don't like it, that's your problem. If you don't, you voted, you don't answer to me, you answer to the members of the fund. Just remember that. I've been in this body for 20 years, I know what it is. Get confronted every day. What's going to happen to me? What kind of annuity is that? I have no answer. I said, go through the legislature. They can change, they can add, they can abolish it whatever they want. With that, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. The two experts are here for any of your detail, but please, consider the seven, over 8,000 government Guam employees who are out there now dangling, have no foreseeable future for their families and their survivors. That's what it is. The market fluctuates, you may be making so much money today, tomorrow, you're going to lose it. You know that. Your 401K, whatever plan you have, the market fluctuates so much, and you need to give them some kind of a guaranteed income. If you don't want to give them guaranteed income, that's your prerogative. You just, every time they're ready to retire, they say, thank you very much for your service, here's a gold watch, remember, goodbye. We can be forgotten, and that's what happened. The elderly are out there, their only source of income is towards the retirement pay. Take it away from them, and what you have is a welfare. All you do is transfer the cost from here to the Department of Medical Health and Social Services. And that's all you need to do is ask. Look at the statistics. Our welfare role is growing up. How many of them that came from the D.C. members who retired with nothing? And that's what we're faced with. We want to continue this, this particular situation? I'm only, I'm done. It's your turn now. You decide. And you look at the guy's face, every member's face, and say, I'm sorry, too tough luck. That's the way it is. And you take your chances, like we all, like I did, for 10 years at the polling booth. And that's what the members will have to say, one way or the other. If they agree with you, I'm sure you guys are going to all come back. If they disagree with you, nice seeing you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and that's also a combination of his privilege of the floor as a former member. Why don't we have an explanation of the plan in detail? Also, if any of you have your iPads or your computers, in the committee report, there, Jerry Cruz's report is in there. I can't remember how far back. He, there are a couple of reports that he's going to be referring to, so if any of you have your computers, yeah, if you can open it up, he can go through and explain it to you, okay?
Thank you. So, hi.
Mr. Chair, if I may, while the presentation is being done by, by Mr. Cruz, at any time that we have a question based on that, are we allowed to ask questions and interject? Or what are the rules of engagements? I'm sorry.
Well, no, I think it's important, if you, if you have a question, go ahead and raise it. I'm sure he's able to, you know, he's, he's able to do two things at one time, he's not going to be, lose his place, and he's got a PowerPoint presentation that he can refer back to. But I think it's important that you, you ask your questions, because that's what this committee of the whole is supposed to do, is to address any of the concerns that you have, address it, address it now so you don't forget it.
During the presentation.
During, while he's presenting, just raise your hand, if I see you, I'll, I'll tap him and ask him to, to hold so that you can, you can pose your question.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Speaker. This is, this is the plan that I'll be going through, the presentation that I'll be going through. It's titled Government of Guam Retirement Fund Hy-Vit Plan Benefits and Cost, and it's a relatively high-level version of the plan. I know at some point, we're going to be drilling down into some more details, so I thought that what we do perhaps is begin with some...
Mr. Chairman, I'm still waiting for a copy. I'm still waiting for a copy of the PowerPoint.
All right, I'm, we'll, we'll run the copy, I'm sorry. I... Okay.
Well, I know that Hy-Vit plan benefits.
Benefits and costs, it was the...
It's the Milliman Report.
It's the presentation, right, it's part of the, it's part of, I suspect, it's part of the committee report.
We'll take a short recess. We'll take a short recess. I hope everybody's received a copy of the handout that Mr. Cruz will be referring to. All right, and I'll ask him to take us through it.
Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Vice Speaker. And again, what I was going to do is just run through this. I know there's going to be a lot of questions, or will be a lot of questions. And I want to leave more time to that because I think that a lot more of the questions that are on your mind will get answered and hopefully clarified as we go through that process rather than going through this. So I'm going to run through this rather quickly. And if there are any questions through it, then please raise your hand and we'll get through it. All right, so this is the hybrid plan that was, this presentation was given at the public hearing. And so it starts with who is eligible for the hybrid plan. It is going to be required for new government employees after a certain hire date. And I know there have been some amendments, so I'm not going to make a comment on the specific dates. But it will be optional for employees of the Government of Guam who are currently in the DC plan. It will also be optional for former employees of the Government of Guam who were members of the DC plan and are rehired into the Government of Guam after the implementation date. And it'll be a one-time opportunity to elect to be in the hybrid plan. Who won't be eligible? Current GovGuan employees who are members of the DB plan, retired members of the DB plan, former Government of Guam employees who are, who were members of the DB plan who did not withdraw their DB plan benefit.
Hold on. Senator Dwyane, you had a question?
He can finish this part.
Okay.
And then former Government of Guam employees who do not return to Government of Guam employment after 1231, or after the implementation date.
Pardon me if this might be later in the plan, but this is a question that came up by several individuals who were watching and had texted to me. Is there a minimum requirement of migration of employees to the hybrid plan to make it work?
The short answer is no.
Okay.
And we can go through the details now or we can wait till later because it does come up.
If there's details later on, then that's fine. I just wanted to get that on the record right now, that this is not predicated on a requirement of a minimum amount of employees transferring from the current DC plan to the hybrid-
Right.
-in order for the contribution rate and the like for it to work in terms of the formula.
Now, I guess what we'll need to do when we get closer into that is define what will work means, right? So we're calibrated on the same definition.
Okay.
But we ran several different scenarios to include what we think is the best-case scenario, what we think would be the most likely scenario. And in every one of those cases, there's impact to the contribution rate, there's impact to the unfunded liability and security ratio. But in every one of those scenarios, if we agree that this will work to mean that the government can afford it and it still remains a better option, then we will agree that, then I could comfortably say that this plan will work.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Jerry, the assumptions that were based on the cost calculations, though, assumed 100% enrollment, correct? Because that's what was said on the public hearing.
We assumed-
All eight thousand.
Right. So we assumed different scenarios. What was presented was the 100%-
Okay.
-as the best-case scenario. But there are several different what-if options that I think may be included, if not in this presentation, in the report from Milliman that included what we thought would be the most likely scenario, which would be those individuals who are over the age of 40 with small balances and those individuals who are over the age of 50 with small balances. We think that in, there's a greater likelihood of those folks, a propensity for those folks to transfer over.
Were those provided during the public hearing or provided in the committee report?
Yes, it's part of the, both, yes, to that question. It's part of Milliman's report.
But it wasn't presented at the public hearing?
I think we, I think we, because I mean-
Because I remember what was presented was the assumption that all eight thousand were rolled in.
We presented, I mean, we had to present something, right? So we presented the eight thousand as a best case, but we included that as part of the report. And I do, I mean, we talked about a lot of things, but I do recall going through the numbers with the 40-plus or just the 50-plus. But it's explicit in the report.
Okay, thank you, Jerry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to ask that maybe Mr. Cruz be allowed to go through his presentation. And we use this as a point of departure, you know, and as we go along, we should just note our questions on whichever particular slide he's got. But, you know, otherwise, I think it's going to be a real disjointed presentation on his part. So I would like to ask that we allow him to finish and then we open it up for Q and A.
I've been reminded that I did say you could ask your question. So it may be disjointed, but I think to allow the members to get it off their, so go ahead. You had a question?
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Mr. Cruz, overall, I had asked this question when we had a meeting with the legal counsel with the Republican Caucus. Overall, is this plan better for a retiree?
Again, we have to calibrate the definition, right? If it's better, better compared to what options are available on the table, yes. Better than what's being currently offered, absolutely.
So better, because that wasn't the answer I got when I had asked that question. So your answer is that this is better.
We believe this is the best options of all that's being presented on the table. And certainly better than what's currently being offered in the way of a DC plan with no safety net.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm now on page four, and it goes into the brief discussion of what the hybrid plan is. And so the definition of the hybrid plan is a combination. And I know there's some differences in that, but for the sake of, for the sake of just going through this presentation, it's a combination of a DB and a 457 plan benefit. The DB portion provides a monthly benefit at retirement, and the 457 accumulates contributions into an account, into an account balance that can be paid at retirement. So analogous, I think, if you think about federal government's Thrift Savings Plan, it would be something similar to that. The DB benefit is 1.75% of the average salary times the years of service. It's equals to about 70% of the average salary after 40 years of service. The salary is averaged over 30 years, and it excludes non-base pay. And I think that was an important highlight because there were some comments about whether or not non-base pay would be a component of the calculation, and in this case, it's not. The benefit is paid upon retirement, on the age, on or after age 65, that's full retirement. That number I need to highlight, the 65 came from, the maximum came from Social Security. That's the number that Social Security uses currently for full retirement. And that's how we, and that's where that number came from. It is a reduced benefit, starting at age 55 with 25 years of service. So to clarify, this, the hybrid plan, as it compares to the DB plan, is age-based rather than service-based. And I think that was, that was mentioned yesterday. So whereas 30 years of service in the DB plan, or 35 or plus years of service is a threshold, in the hybrid, it's age. There is a disability and survivor and child benefits, and there are incremental increases to the monthly benefits after retirement. The 457 benefit is a mandatory 1% minimum contribution. It is, the 1% represents a minimum contribution by the employee. Members?
Jerry, real quick, I know that I asked this question at the public hearing, but, you know, if I can just expand on the question. If we remove the 457 benefit plan, would this plan still be called a hybrid?
So by definition, hybrid, right? Like a hybrid car would be electric plus gas. So if you remove any one of the components, then technically, it's not.
Well, specifically for the 457. If we remove the 457 plan, what would this plan be classified as?
If you remove the DC component of a DC, of this plan, then it would be a DB plan.
Oh, so it would be a defined benefit plan? If the 457 section of the hybrid was not part of this, it would be a defined benefit plan?
Correct. I mean, and again, back to the electric car, hybrid car. If you remove the electric component of a gas-run car, then it's no longer a hybrid car. So yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, so I think I'm on the third bullet, but the account balance is growing with contribution and investment earnings, and the account balance being available at retirement. So this is what members pay in the way of employee contributions. The base pay towards the DB benefit is nine and a half percent of current pay, plus a 1% contribution, as I mentioned earlier, to the 457. DC, DC members who elected to transfer to the hybrid must transfer their DC balances into the hybrid, and employer contributions will be transferred at 100%, and then employee contributions in the DC will be transferred up to the actual, actuarial cost of the transfer.
Now, Mr. Cruz, this is where I think I want clarity. And I listened to the wonderful opening statement of the good former speaker. What I'm trying to get to here, because this is where a lot of employees that I've talked to don't understand this part yet. Is this required by law for this body to enact this contribution rate into law? Or could the retirement fund be the one to mandate this to the employees anyways, thereby making the plan better by increasing their contribution as a function of the retirement board, the current plan?
So could we simply increase the contribution rate to nine and a half percent under the existing plan document?
That's the question.
In order to derive a similar benefit that we're talking about in the hybrid plan?
Yeah, because you, I mean, isn't it typical that you would set the rate of contribution?
Right. And so, no. And this is why. The, we can raise through plan document, I don't even know if we can do that through plan. I think that needs to come to the legislature in terms of, you know, what the contribution rate is going to be for the employee. But assuming that we could do that, we can raise the contribution rate, but it doesn't change the benefit payout. In other words, the hybrid plan calculates a benefit as 1.75% of three highest salaries. Whereas, under the DC plan, it's whatever is left at the end of your employment term is what you get. And you can elect to buy an annuity, or, you know, you can do whatever you want with it at that time, but it remains a self-directed plan, the DC plan, versus the DB plan where you, where we create the benefit for you.
Okay, good. And this is why I think yesterday, when Senator St. Nicholas proffered his amendment and the whole context of the conversation that we're having and the employees that I'm talking to, wouldn't it have been better, especially with the consequence of legislation like this, to disseminate to all DC members at this time what the effect of this? You know, I know we're doing good for them, and we're helping them save, and this is what the lawmakers would pass to say, this is what you need to do in order to realize that retirement benefit. And, you know, it's almost like a forced contribution, but wouldn't it have been effective to have disseminated that information as part and parcel of this whole 15, five-year, three-week presentation?
And, well, if we knew with certainty that what was going to be disseminated would be the end product, then I'd say the answer is yes. But until something's, you know, passed into law, right, it just becomes certain talking points, and we're not sure whether, what we discuss in terms of what your plan would look like would actually be the truth. Because, you know, you guys have the option to change it through, you know, through the process of passing a bill into law. There remains, once this does get passed into law, the structure of the bill was such that it creates the framework by which we're going to put a DC plan together. So it creates some of the bigger numbers, the high-level numbers. But once and if this gets passed into law, there's going to be a period of time when we need to create a new plan document that's going to address a lot of the issues that, you know, that you're bringing up. Some of the, some of the technicalities that need to be spelled out will be listed in a plan document, similar to the way plan document was done for the DC plan. So the law created the framework, and then the plan document is what created the actual working model for, so this works similar to that.
So the amendment passed yesterday is very realistic.
I'll be honest with you, I had left yesterday.
Okay.
So I don't recall exactly what the amendment was.
The amendment calls for dissemination of information-
Oh, absolutely.
...to DC members, and also upon the retirement, making the request to the legislature, you need to do this and pass this into law so we can make a viable plan.
Right. I mean, dissemination of information is going to be a necessary component of getting this, you know, seeing the success of, I mean, really, any plan that gets passed by the legislature, this or any other plan. So, because there are going to be choices that need to be made, and those choices need to be based on something, right? It can't just be a feeling, a gut.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Cruz. On this, you have nine and a half percent of pay towards the DB benefit, 1% of pay. So, and I see, I was looking at the slides or the pages after, the, if you, if we have the hybrid, the contribution rate of the employee is going to increase versus what they're paying in the DC plan, right?
The contribution rate, yes, that's correct.
So what are they paying now? What is their contribution?
So employees currently pay 5% to a DC plan.
And so this hybrid would require a 2% or?
So the hybrid, what happens is that the hybrid plan contribution rate for the employee will go to, all told, 10 and a half percent. So nine and a half to the DB portion, and then 1% minimum to the DC portion.
So it does increase, the contribution rate does increase.
Yes.
Okay, and I think that's also something that, that's why I supported the amendment yesterday, is that I don't think the employees do understand that. Like this morning, I went to my son's school, and the teacher was saying, oh, thank you very much for looking out for us. And I'm, you know, I'm in the same boat as you guys. We want to do something where it's going to right the wrong that we're currently in. So I'm on board. The problem is, I don't think they really understand what it's going to take on their part.
Right.
It's going to take them to invest more, which, you know, we, I think for me, I understand that, right? But I think for them, they need to understand it as well. Because then, when I told her, I said, do you understand that this is what's going to happen? And she said, no, I didn't. She said, well, what will happen now? Because I use this money to buy supplies, because we don't have enough supplies at school-
Sure.
...to do things. So I think that's very important, and then maybe when we go down through the other pages, you'll be able to explain further, right?
Yeah, yes.
But the other thing, too, is what would- But the, but the other thing, too, is what would be the government's contribution versus what it is now on a DC plan?
And so, yeah, and that's a good question, because I did want to, I did want to touch on that. The government contribution, as Senator St. Nicholas, I'm sorry, as Senator Limtiaco mentioned earlier, is going to depend really on the amount of transfers that come over, right? And so, we've, we've estimated certain different scenarios, but the government contribution rate currently is around twenty-nine percent, twenty-nine eight-five, I think, or twenty-nine something, but around twenty, twenty-nine percent, let's call it thirty percent. Depending on the scenario that works, the best-case scenario is it's going to go down a few basis points, so it's going to go down to maybe twenty-eight or twenty-nine, low twenty-nines. And I, you know, and I hate to just do this off the top of my head, because I know it's on the record, but I, the worst-case scenario, I think, was thirty-one percent under the hybrid plan. That's the contribution rate. The, the number one point eight percent of payroll, that's the, that's the normal cost of this plan, similar to the old, or the DB plan, where the normal cost is five point five seven percent, or something in that neighborhood. But the contribution rate, until the unfunded liability is paid off, is going to be twenty-nine percent.
Okay.
One, one contribution rate.
Okay. And then, this is my last question, and I'll stop and listen. Are you able to provide us, I think it was asked during the public hearing, a scenario, if you take an employee, a teacher, a teacher's salary, you know, and X amount of years, just for, just for us to see the picture, real picture? Are you able to do that for us a little later on?
So, so I thought we did on the second night, but if we, if it hadn't, if it didn't get, well, but we'll get it for you, yes. I think I'll ask Diane out there if she can pull something, or is it in the, it may be in the committee report.
Senator Trump.
Okay.
So, Mr. Cruz, do I understand, then, that the government's contribution into the plan is not at all affected by converting to this hybrid plan?
So, we tried to make this as cost-neutral as possible, and certainly, you know, in a perfect world, that would be the case, but it's not. But, yes, that's the short answer to your question. The, the, the contribution rate is, is going to be affected, right? Because we just don't know exactly how many people are going to come over. But the range of the effect, we're thinking, is, at best case, a reduction by, and I'm going to call it fifty basis points, so point five, point, point five percent, to a increase to around thirty-one percent under worst-case scenario. And the worst-case scenario is defined as those who have very little years in the system, but are real close to the age of retirement, those who are fifty and above. Only those folks transfer over.
So, so then, going to the question that Senator Duñez had asked earlier, where by converting to the hybrid plan, the members will now basically almost actually double their contribution. What's going to be deducted from their pay, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And, and so, I don't know if he was, where he was going with that question, but if, if the government's contribution was increased somewhat, then I guess that would then lower the member's contribution, is that correct?
Well, you have to think of it like a DB plan, right? So, because that component that we're talking about, in terms of government contribution and then employee contribution, is the DB portion of this hybrid plan. And the contribution by the government is calculated by first paying off the unfunded liability, the amorti, the amortized rate for that year, and then the normal cost to run that plan. And that's, you know, the combination of the two results in what the contribution rate for the government's going to be. The, the employees' rate, and this is, the way we came up with nine and a half is we just matched the nine and a half percent, or the, yeah, well, we just matched the nine and a half percent of the DB to the, to what the old DB was. And that's where we came up with. If you slide that scale down, you can potentially, you know, have the government increase its, its share, but it's an overall increase to the normal cost of the hybrid plan, rather than, well, it's a normal cost to the hybrid plan is where you'll see the increase in, in the cost for the government's share. The, the other point I wanted to make with regard to the contribution rate, there is a doubling of the contribution rate from where the DC employee is now to where the DC employee is going to be if they do decide to transfer. They, they have the option to transfer. These DC employees are not compelled to, to move, so they have the ability to look at whether it's going to make sense for them or not. And the second point I wanted to make, which is, I think, an important point, is that there is no, there is no plan out there, none of the options out there, that is going to not result in an increase to the employees' contribution to the plan. I mean, it's, it's simple math. I mean, you can't pay what you're paying now and expect an increased benefit at, at the end of your retirement career, especially when the life of your remaining work career is, is, has been shortened. So, whether it be this plan, or whether it be social security, if you think about social security plus the DC plan, the contribution rate's going to go up to twelve point six five percent, rather than the ten and a half percent that we're talking about under the, the hybrid plan. And we can get into those discussions later, but I know that, that, that the doubling of the contribution rate has come up a couple times on the employee's side, and it's something that current employees need to think about, for sure. And it may or may not make sense for, for them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, a lot of numbers are getting lost in the comparison, because we're, we keep adding the unfunded liability portion to the percentages, but if we just compare normal cost to normal cost, the DC plan's normal cost is five percent. The hybrid plan's normal cost to the government is only going to be one point eight percent. Now, if we, that's on the government's side. Now, on the employee's side, normal cost to normal cost, the DC plan, right now, only costs employees five percent. But the hybrid plan is going to cost employees nine point five percent. So, comparing normal cost to normal cost, the employee's going to pay double, and the government is going to pay twenty percent if we go with the hybrid plan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, my question is, why can't we just have the government's share stay at five percent if they convert to the hybrid and have the employee stay at four point five percent to make up for that nine point five?
I mean, we can work numbers however you want. So, part of our goals was to make this affordable, right? Because an option that's not affordable really isn't an option. So, we, we tried to keep the.
If the current contribution rate of the government is already five percent for the DC plan, how does it become less affordable if we pay the same five percent in the hybrid plan?
I mean, we can run those numbers, right? Because, I mean, you're asking me to do pretty complicated math off the top of my head, I'm just not smart enough to do that. So, we can run the math to, to answer that question, I just don't have a straight answer for you right now. Conceptually, possible, but, you know, when you're running big numbers, as you'll see with things like the security ratio, the unfunded liability, when you're running ratios, running fractions and things of that nature, you know, I mean, a lot depends on the denominator, a lot depends on the numerator, and to, to determine what your outcome's going to be. So, so that I don't come back to you with an incorrect answer inadvertently, let us run some numbers, and, and we'll see what those costs are going to be to the government. But I know that one of the key points when we were putting this together was to try to, to try to keep the cost to, the government at a, at a, at an affordable level. And so, maybe, maybe it'll work, maybe it'll work.
Yeah, because for me, that's, that's one of the biggest hang-ups that I'm having right now, is just the idea that we're going to double the cost to employee and save on the government's side, when I, I still have, I'm having a very difficult time trying to understand why we can't just keep the government rate the same and the employee rate the same, since it all adds up to the same percentages? Because I'm, I'm very concerned about impacting take-home pay for employees.
Sure.
Just to save the government money. I mean, if we're already contributing that five percent now, why can't we just continue to contribute that five percent if they were to select the hybrid plan? So, if I could get a better understanding of why the math has to be like that, I would be able to.
Okay. And, and we'll try to get you a, a straight answer for that. But just, just know for the record, we're really not saving the government any money. The best-case scenario saves a few basis points in terms of contribution rate, but the worst-case scenario causes the contribution rate to go up. So, the government, the government is, under the worst-case scenario, will be paying slightly more.
And that's why I'm really confused, because, I mean, all else being equal, right, we have these seven thousand eight hundred employees, the government's contributing five percent to, plus the percentages that we have to contribute for the unfunded liability. Assuming all of them were to convert over to the hybrid plan, why can't we just keep the, the percentage contributions the same? Why now the government's only going to have to contribute one point eight percent? Is the unfunded liability portion that we're going to have to make up for going to go up? And is that why we need to contribute less to the employee's side? I, I, I'm trying to figure out why we cannot just have a, a clean government share in one plan or the other.
We can't have a, well, the DC plan ends by you taking out whatever you put in, but the DB side of this plan lives in perpetuity, and so, it, the components change, and in a perfect world, you can calculate every variable almost to near perfection, so to speak. But when running those calculations, we just, there's just so many ranges. And so, the numbers don't always come out as we would conceptually think things would work in a perfect world. So, again, we can probably come to the rationale as why, you know, those, that, why conceptually it doesn't work out, the math doesn't work out, and we can, we can explain it. But we tried to not get too, let me just stop there. Let's work the math and see if it's going to be able to address the questions that you have, and, and then address what, any additional questions that you have from there.
Okay. So, I'll just, I guess we won't, we won't adjourn or, or rise until we sort that all out, Mr. Chair.
We may have, we may have those numbers, I just have to look for them. I mean, we've, yeah, sixteen iterations is a lot, so we, we probably do have them.
Thank you.
And also, one thing that I think everybody needs to understand, because we are admittedly going from a DC to a DB, we pointed that out, these employees, seventy-eight hundred employees, will be getting the average of one point seven five percent of their salary for the three highest years that they've been in service, times the number of years that they're in service. Currently, right now, if they retire, they take their hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's it. Two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, whatever the amount that they have in the DC, or forty thousand, and that's all they have. By putting this, this DB component on, which is not free, these employees will have a survivor benefit, which doesn't currently exist. It'll provide for incremental increases to address inflation after they retire. And that's what we're trying to do, find an, a floor by which they will go in from their sixty-fifth birthday till their eighty-fifth or their ninety-fifth birthday. Right now, at age sixty-five, they take their hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and they can go buy a car or, or move to Las Vegas, and then go on welfare.
Mr. Chair, to be fair, though, you're, you're failing to disclose the fact that this plan is increasing their contributions by, by, by double, by five point five percent. So, if they did that in their current DC plan, it's not what you're, it's not the picture that you're painting. So, you need to at least be clear that if these employees were to self, self-increase their contributions, basically double what this plan would be doing, I think that you need to at least disclose the fact that that number that you referred to, the hundred and fifty, or whatever they would be left with, would be substantially higher.
Okay.
So, just for the record.
For the record, if one of you that's on the DC currently wants to, you can increase your, your contribution to twenty percent of your salary. Whether or not it's going to be pre-tax or post-tax, I, I can't answer that question. This one's pre-tax, and you can increase.
The DC plan is also pre-tax.
The, I'm just saying that.
The four fifty-seven plan.
If they want to, if they want to increase right now the amount of money that they put away into their 401, they can. And whether or not they want to do that at the, at the, at the salaries that they're making, if we're worried about the schoolteacher who's not going to be able to buy his, or her, her supplies for her class, it, they're, they're not going to have that additional money to do that anyway.
Well, they wouldn't have that under the DB plan either, because it would be mandatory at that point. With the DC plan, they have the option to contribute or not. Let's say that they have some years of hardship, that they need that cash flow, they could reduce the contribution to their four fifty-seven plan. This hybrid plan doesn't give them that option, is that correct, Jerry?
The hybrid plan gives you the option to reduce your four fifty-seven, is that, is that, I'm sorry.
No, no, the, there's a mandatory contribution of ten and a half percent, right? Nine and a half percent in the plan, and one percent mandatory in the four fifty-seven.
That's correct.
With the current DC plan, though, members can choose to contribute whatever they want to their four fifty-seven plan.
Correct.
Including zero.
Correct.
So, Mr. Chair, just to be fair, so that the, those that are listening in the audience, that they have the full picture, we weren't, you were not comparing apples to apples there, because you're assuming that they would stay at the same rate of contribution that they are now, not assuming that they would increase it as much as the DB plan proposes. Is that correct?
No, you can, a DC member can increase right now to, to, to ten, fifteen percent if they want.
Exactly. I'm just saying that the scenario that you had, had, had explained regarding this hybrid plan was not necessarily doing justice to the current DC plan, because we, you did not, you, the, the, the current contributors or the current plan members could also increase their contributions by the additional five and a half percent that the hybrid plan is proposing. That's all I'm saying, is that.
Yeah. No, I, I agree. If they knew that they could, and if, if any of them have done, I, I haven't met anybody who's increased their, their contribution.
Okay.
Speaker, you had a question?
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the, on page seven of your slide, where the one percent is for four fifty-seven.
Okay.
My question is, can we allow the employees to be able then, in this plan, rather than the one percent, is to even increase it to, let's say, two or three percent? And, you know, do that by law and cap it?
Okay.
That, that might be the max. Would there be any objection to that?
So, the question I'm hearing is, could we increase the minimum contribution from one to two?
Yeah, or three.
Or three.
Yeah, you're right.
Under this hybrid plan?
You're right. Would it affect the plan at all if that was, if they're going to be allowed to do, to do that?
I don't, I don't think, well, to the extent that it would complicate the plan as written, I don't think there would be issues to that. But in terms of affordability.
Well, you're right, because then it's going to be those, of course, who are able to afford it, and I have, you know, in the public hearing, I was able to get now an actual salary and all the deductions to basically show that you're right, there are going to be those at the low end who just can't afford it.
Right.
But for those who can and want to pay
Yes.
The additional, to save more, because as you said, that the more then, of course, you contribute, the greater then the returns will be.
Correct.
So, rather than just cap it at the one percent.
Correct. So, no, 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 if I, if I said that it was a cap of one percent, then I misspoke. So, the, the one percent represents a minimum required for the employee, so they could grow it.
Okay. So, then, however, in the plan, though, you're saying it's one percent, should, then the bill passes, then are we locking that one percent in? Or is there that flexibility then now to say that it definitely could go up? That, you know, if you want to cap it at three, or you just want to leave it open and let the employee decide, like you said earlier?
Sure, sure.
If the employee wants to put fifteen percent of their salary, I mean, at least that's what I've been hearing.
Right.
That for, to retire, you want to make sure you put in fifteen percent, start saving right now for you to retire.
Right. So, yes, is the answer to your question. We, we have a mandatory one percent, the employee through the plan document will be, it will be explicit that they could. increase their contribution up to, oh, at their discretion, I think, is what we're going to put.
Yeah. And I, I think it's important that, you know, that that be stated in the plan, so that we're not locked in then with that 1, 1 percent mandatory.
It, it is not locked in, ma'am.
Okay.
That is the minimum.
Okay. The, the other question that I have right now, and I, it's a follow-up with several discussions by my colleagues here, is that when we look at the employer contribution for the DC plan, was it, is at 5 percent? And now with the hybrid, we're saying it's going to be 1 percent. So, there's a definite reduction in terms of what the government then will be putting in for the employees. My question, similar, I guess, to the others, is that, is to not then penalize, I mean, I can understand those going to the hybrid, but not to penalize those who are going to choose to stay that then, and since there is going to be the assumption, maybe, that maybe not 100 percent, like, because I know not 100 percent would transfer, because I've spoken to some who want to stay...
Sure.
...with the DC plan. And, but do not want to be penalized to stay in the DC plan and be locked in with that. And if the government then is going to reduce its contribution for the, those who want to go to the hybrid, can the government, and, and, and this is exactly what Speaker Joe T. said, is that if you think about it, when this DC, I mean, the, the DB plan was first created, it's because we wanted, the goal of the government was to keep the employees on island, to keep them here working for the government. Now, we're saying, of course, is that we want to be able now to give these employees at the DCs a dignified retirement plan. But then now, this question that, hearing both that and hearing the history, then why is it that the government then, in this case, because I think it would help even those DC employees who want to stay, to, you know, have the government contribute, whether it's an additional 1 or 2 percent? But there should be a caveat that if you are then at five years, let's say, you become vested, and then therefore you're entitled to that percentage, and if you, for that one additional percent, let's say, from five to six. And if we want to increase it, the government wants to increase it to 2 percent, then maybe you want to double that number to have then the employee become vested in that, you know, plan, that then now they, they're, they own it, you know, by being employed for, for 10 years? That type of thing. Is that then a doable plan as well to, to allow for the DC employees?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You brought up a lot of issues in that, in that one question. Let's just talk about the DC issue first, since that's what you left off with. The DC plan is not going anywhere. Like you said, there's going to be new members who are actually existing members that don't want to transfer. Therefore, the DC plan is not going to change. The contribution is going to remain the same. The employer contribution's going to remain the same. It's going to be administered the same way it's been administered since 1995. And so, I, I hope that answers that question with regard to the effect of DC plan members.
Yes, but, but I'm, I, what I'm saying to, at the same time, because I asked this question at the public hearing, is that, and then it was brought up about some of the loopholes that we have in the plan, in the plans that we have right now, and even the future plan, is that why is it that we, why can't we follow, in essence, then, the federal plan in, in the sense of having them contribute, you know, at a, the government contribute at a, at a higher plan? I mean, just let's say, take away completely the hybrid, if we weren't going to go that way. And we want to make our, our employees, you know, whole. We want to give them that type, a dignified retirement. Is it, could it rather have been a, an option to say that, oh, those are currently in this plan, we're going to help you by having the government contribute instead, an additional 1 or 2 percent, you know, for the employ, the employees by the government? Wouldn't, couldn't that have helped all those currently in the plan?
Most definitely. I mean, there, you, like the chairman spoke earlier, you guys are really, the government is the employer, and the employer really owns the plan. And so, it really comes down to whether the legislature, through the policymaking body, wants to pay that extra 2 percent, because that is a funding issue. It's not a retirement fund issue. And so, if you, but keep in mind that, right now, if you're out of the employer contribution, which was at, last year, 30.03 percent, 5 percent of that goes into the DC plan. So, if you were going to increase the government's contribution 2 percent, let's say, and up to 7 percent, that government contribution now goes up to 32 percent. So, whether it's sustainable or not is really not the board's decision.
You're right. I understand.
But yes, you can't, the, the legislature can say, "We will put in more."
And have you, in the past, then, ran that scenario? In the 20 years that this has been in effect, have you ran that scenario and presented it to the legislature? You know, when you're seeing that we're having some of our people already retire, and that they're, they're not retiring, you know, with an affordable amount, you know, to, to be able to live on beyond, you know, even five years without having to, you know, spend it all, absorb, you know, every penny of it? That's, that's one. And then, of course, the other is, where we're at now, of course, I realize where we're at right now with the hybrid plan, have you run the numbers as well then, that in your assumptions, that, you know, not all want, want, I mean, not all 7, 800 are going to transfer? That there definitely will be some, I don't know what the numbers are, that, you know, will stay? That then, those who would stay, is that to, then, since the government's going to decrease one, decrease this contribution to 1.8 for, let's just say hypothetically, for 7,000, and then the 800 are going to stay? So, then, there's that reduction of government contributions, but now, then, we're, you know, they can use the difference of that amount for the 800 to increase it to 6 percent instead, or 7 percent? And then, of course, add on, like I said, to be vested, you know, the five years, or 10 years, you know, of, of being, of their employment that they're, they're, are vested members to the plan.
I'll take the first question. It's the hard one. We did run scenarios talking about simply increasing the contribution rate for certain individuals who, you know, are close to retirement. And while we can do that, what, what, where we thought would be, even if we did that, I should say, we thought that it would make an immaterial effect, it'd have an immaterial impact, because of our inability in that short timeframe to account for what we call longevity risk. And that is the risk that the retiree is going to outlive their, their DC plan. We simply weren't sure what that number was going to be. And so, instead of going through, instead of attacking this at the micro level, which is to look at every one employee and come up with a separate calculation, we thought it much more efficient if we simply looked at the overall macro level, to determine how we could best fit, you know, the bigger, the bigger group, the, the, the greater majority, so to speak. Because we could try to do it at the micro level, but then the administrative cost of doing something like that would wipe out any benefit and make it simply unaffordable. And we would still, the, the employees, I'm sorry, the, then the retirees would still incur or go through that longevity risk.
I'm sorry. There's a resolution presentation next door, and I know that some people are trying to go over. I don't want people to leave the floor and not hear the explanation, so why don't we just take a short recess?